All right, well, we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. Can we call the meeting to order? Can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Here.
Commissioner Blacco is absent. Commissioner Carey.
Present.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Rossen.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick.
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Ornalis.
Here.
And I forgot to mention that you would provide information on the call-in and the slide. Do you want to do that now before we open up public comment?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. There are two separate public comment periods associated with tonight's agenda. The commission will take general public comment during Agenda Items 3 and 9. If you wish to speak during either of these public comment periods, you will need to access the Zoom link shown here or provided on the agenda located on the city's website under Boards and Commissions. You can also join the meeting by telephone by dialing 1-669-900-6833, and the meeting ID number is 919-8722-8219. This will join you by audio to the meeting. You will be prompted by the Chair or the Secretary when public comment is open. Use the Zoom features or press *9 on your telephone to request to speak. Please note that pressing *9 once raises your hand. If you press it twice, it will lower your hand. Please make sure your hand is raised if you wish to speak. Individuals shall limit their comments to three minutes per Nevada Revised Statute 241.020.
Thank you, Mary Lee. So let's go ahead and open up public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to provide comment on any item on or off the agenda. Do we have anybody waiting for a public comment?
We have no requests to speak at this time.
Thank you, Casey. Since there is none, I will go ahead and close public comment and move on to Item 4, which is approval of the agenda. Commissioner Peterson.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to approve the agenda as read. There's no alterations or corrections.
We have a motion. Can I get a second? We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson and a second by Commissioner Pritzos. Any discussion? Can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner Blacco is absent. Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 5 is the review and possible approval of the minutes of the September 17th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, all 83 pages of those meeting minutes look good to me. I'll make a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes of September 17th. As submitted.
Madam Chairman, I'll second.
I think Commissioner Pritzos beat you to it.
That's not fair.
We've got to start that again. So we have a motion by Commissioner Carey and a second by Commissioner Pritzos. Any discussion? Can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner Blacco is absent. Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next is public hearing items, and there are no public hearing items. So we'll move on to general business. And first up is PCN 20-0029, "Consideration of and Possible Action on Request to Approve Architectural Building Elevations for a 3,220-square-foot financial institution with the drive-through on a site approximately 1.45 acres in size, located at 1440 Lincoln Way in Sparks in the new urban district in fulfillment of the requirements set forth in the Legends of Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook." Ian.
Thank you, Chair Reed, members of the Planning Commission. I am Ian Critten, your Development Services Manager. Just to check, everybody can see the screen and hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is a request to approve the elevations for the First American Credit Union located in the Legends Plan Development. As you can see, the site outlined here in red, the site is located in the Legends Plan Development, just north of kind of the main roundabout there on East Lincoln Way and southwest of the target location. Financial institutions are a permitted use in the Legends Plan Development, and the site plan for this site was approved by Administrator Review. The Legends Plan requires that building elevations be reviewed and approved by Planning Commission. Just for your orientation here, the roundabout on East Lincoln Way is just south here, kind of off the drawing. And north east of the site, just off the map, so to speak, is Target, just up here. The credit union is proposed in the south kind of end of that parcel with a drive-through being wrapped around the south end of the building. The design standards in the handbook require conformance with both city standards, and they also require that each new building is consistent with the rest of the buildings throughout Legends, kind of the development as a whole. The design standards also establish the palette of materials as well as requirements for architecture and articulation to be present on all sides of the building. This is a list of the materials that are, excuse me, proposed to be used on the credit union building. These materials are consistent with those used throughout Legends. We specifically see here stone veneer, which is used extensively throughout Legends, as well as brick and precast stone. Some other materials that you also see throughout the center are metal panels as well as aluminum storefronts. They're pretty standard commercial building materials. The elevations incorporate stone around the base of the building with the precast stone banding just above that, and then brick above those two elements. That level of articulation provides interest, specifically at kind of the pedestrian and human scale for the building. The upper element is metal panels that are provided in the company's corporate branding colors. This is the applicant's material sheet. Staff believes that the materials being used are consistent with the example materials given in the handbook. I've included Sheet 7 especially because I felt that this was the one that had the kind of the cool tones that kind of matched exactly what is being used on this building. That being said, staff is recommending approval of these elevations as we feel they are in compliance and are consistent with the design standards of the buildings throughout Legends. That's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ian. Do any commissioners have a question? I see Commissioner Carey's hand is already up. Go ahead, Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ian, it looks like the elevations that you showed tonight are different than what's included in the packet.
That is correct. Commissioner Carey, I apologize. I had noticed that there was an error when we had posted them prior to the study session, and I had intended to get the updated and correct ones to Mary Lee. I know how they got there. The original submittal is what got posted. But why I included them as the posting material, I don't know how I got them there. And then I just failed to get them to Mary Lee beforehand. So the posted presentation and the updated graphic will be posted to the website by tomorrow in conformance with open meeting requirements.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess we'll continue the discussion that we had on Tuesday. And I just kind of want to make sure that the record is clear here with kind of the difference because we didn't get an opportunity to see these elevations prior to the meeting. I don't think the public had an opportunity to see them other than what's presented tonight. So the main differences are it looked like the elevations in the packet included more kind of a, I don't know, it looks like a gray sort of main material. And then the ones that are in your presentation are more of a tan or a lighter, I think you said, cool tone.
Well, yeah. Yes, the original application was more of the corporate branding colors with more kind of grays and whites incorporated into the elevations. After some conversations with staff, the applicant resubmitted and provided one with more materials, with the addition of the stacked stone as well as the precast stone banding. And then they'd used brick previously, but it had been kind of a white or gray color. And so they did update that to a more traditional brown kind of colored bricks that are used pretty predominantly throughout Legends.
Thank you for that explanation, Ian. I appreciate getting that on the record. I guess a question for Allison, if I may, Madam Chair. Are we allowed to approve the elevations tonight that were included on the presentation but not posted on the website or made available to the public prior to the meeting? Are there any open meeting law concerns with doing that? Do we have to revise our motion tonight in any way?
There aren't any open meeting law concerns as long as the presentation gets posted to the website within 24 hours of the close of tonight's meeting. As far as the motion, it would be better for it to state, you know, clearly that the elevations being approved are the ones that were in Mr. Critten's presentation rather than the meeting packet.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any other questions? Do we have the applicant rep here that would like, see if they would like to add any comments to what was already presented?
Tim Snidman is able to speak now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Tim Snidman with America First Credit Union. I don't really have any comments to add. I'm just kind of what Ian said, that we did update our plans to try to incorporate our building more into what the building surrounding it would be and the development. So we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. May I just interrupt for a second? Casey, I think AWA is also an applicant's representative, and I saw her hand was raised.
She should be able to speak now.
Thank you.
Looks like she's still muted.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
All right, I'm Natalie with AWA. I'm just going to reiterate what Tim said, that, you know, we're excited to come into Sparks, and we appreciate all the direction we've been given so far on these elevations. We hope to get approval and move forward and get going. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Any more questions for staff? I will, any further discussion or I will entertain a motion? Commissioner Carey.
Madam Chair, I'll give this a shot. I certainly appreciate the explanation from staff and to make sure that the record is clear on which set of elevations we're proposing. It would be my preference in the future that we would receive any revised elevations prior to the meeting and also allow the public to see them as well as opposed to after the fact. But with that said, I'm going to trust staff on this one. I concur with their recommendation of approval and agree that it does meet the design standards from what I can tell from viewing it on here on Zoom. But I think the lighter colors, as the applicant stated, will help match up with the rest of the center. And so I would just kind of hope in the future that we would receive these prior before. So I'll make a stab at a motion here. I move to approve the architectural elevations for the financial institution with the drive-through in fulfillment of the requirements set forth in the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook. And I guess as part of the motion would include that those architectural elevations are the ones that were presented at the meeting tonight and not the ones that are posted on the website or included in our staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. That was a mouthful on that motion. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Carey and a second by Commissioner Pritzos. Any further discussion? Commissioner Peterson.
In the discussion, I also noticed the difference in these elevations. But I must state that I approve it. I like these elevations as presented tonight a little bit better because it's a little stronger and a darker combination, which I think is more within line and compatible with the rest of the Legends facilities we have there. So yes, I'll be in favor of this motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner Blacco is absent. Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rossen. Commissioner Rossen, you're muted.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Ian. Next up is PCN 18-0007, "Consideration of and Possible Action on Request to Amend a tentative map to add 30 lots, increasing the number of lots from 459 to 489 by incorporating townhome units into the tentative map." The tentative map is a forest site approximately 18.45 acres in size within the new urban district of Stone Brook, generally located east of Pyramid Way and south of La Posada Drive in Sparks.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. CNN Reed with Planning presenting this item tonight. Let me go ahead and get my screen shared so you can see the presentation. All right, so just to confirm, sound is good and everyone can see the slide deck in front of them? Okay. Okay, so before you this evening is a request to amend the tentative map for Phase 2 of the Stone Brook Plan Development. On this slide, you'll see the Stone Brook Phase 2 project area is outlined in red. Phase 2 is located at the southern terminus of Stone Brook Parkway and is found in the southeast portion of the larger Stone Brook Plan Development boundary. And on this slide, you can see that larger Stone Brook boundary outlined with the blue dashes. And then for further reference, Opio Ranch Parkway is located along the northern portion of the Phase 2 project site. The original tentative map for Stone Brook Phase 2 was approved in May of 2018, and it is still active. That current tentative map consists of 459 single-family lots on approximately 118.45 acres. Lots range in size from approximately 4,625 to 20,649 square feet. With that current tentative map, there are five villages specified, and you can actually see those on the graphic on this slide. Village E, which is shown in green, includes 99 lots. 108 lots are shown in Village F, which is the peachy-colored area, and a total of 252 lots are found in Villages G1, 2, and 3. And those areas are the pink, yellow, and blue areas west of the extension facility, which on this particular slide is not colored, and then also south of Stone Brook Parkway. And as I mentioned, this map is still active. And to date, we've had 141 lots within Phase 2 that are being reviewed into final maps. The proposed amendment to the Stone Brook Phase 2 tentative map before you tonight requests adding 30 lots that would increase the number from 459 to 489 by incorporating townhome units into the tentative map. The site size remains unchanged at a bit over 118 acres. And as proposed, lots range in size from approximately 4,174 to, excuse me, to 21,777 square feet. And there's an average lot size there of 6,500 square feet across the project site. What we end up with is a gross density of 4.2 dwelling units per acre. In terms of the lot breakdown, there are three primary villages, EF and G, and each of them have been further divided into sub-villages. Within Village E, which you can see here on this slide in purple, there are 105 lots. Village F, which is shown in light green, has 109 lots. And then Village G, which is actually a combination of the light orange and beige colors, includes a total of 275 lots. Villages G2A and G2B, which you can see in the light orange color at the southwest portion of the project site, those are the lots that are planned for townhome units. In addition, there are also four lots where a model home complex will be located that are also planned for townhome units. And on this particular slide, you can see the location of that model home complex outlined with some red dashes. And just to kind of point them out, this model home complex is here, if you follow my cursor. This next slide shows the preliminary landscape plan for Stone Brook Phase 2 as proposed for amendment. And it really gives you a better sense of the overall subdivision design. So both Villages E and F are designed to meet the single-family LDR residential handbook standards. And again, to orient, Village E is located here on the eastern side of the site, and Village F is located here on the northwest portion of the site. Villages G1A and G1B, those are each located west of the drainage facility. Those are designed to meet the patio home standards in the handbook. And as just discussed, Villages G2A and G2B are designed to meet the townhome standards, and those are in the southwest portion of the project site. One thing that you'll notice on this slide are two thick black lines. Those are illustrating regional trails within the project site. The regional trail that runs on the eastern side of the drainage facility, it connects Stone Brook Phase 1 to the north, and then will ultimately connect at the southeast corner of the site to the existing regional trail system that's located within Wingfield Springs. At the northeast portion of the project site, the regional trail proposed will actually create a missing link connecting the existing regional trail system in Simron to that in Wingfield Springs with just a small portion running through Stone Brook Phase 2. And also of note, a neighborhood park was identified east of the drainage facility with the original tentative map request. However, in January of 2019, City Council did approve a variety of amendments to the Stone Brook Handbook. And one of those amendments provided for the consolidation of two 5-acre neighborhood parks into one larger community park. That community park is 20 acres in size, thereabouts, and located just south of La Posada Drive within Stone Brook Phase 3. So you'll see that coming forward with a future tentative map. But with that handbook amendment, a neighborhood park is no longer shown east of the drainage facility. So definitely wanted to point that out because it does influence how the conditions have been revised. In conjunction with the request to amend the Phase 2 tentative map, the applicant has also submitted a request to deviate from the recreation area standards for townhomes that are specified in the handbook. The handbook does authorize the administrator to approve deviations and waivers from a variety of handbook standards. Those standards that are in place for the townhome recreation areas require play areas that include three features. Those could be tot lots, a half-court for basketball, fitness clusters, or large or small group picnic areas. However, because the applicant intends to develop an active adult community, the deviation eliminates the more child-oriented play area in favor of an active-adult landscape common area with features such as walking paths, benches, gathering areas with trellis shading, active-adult fitness equipment, and potentially a bocce ball court. And so this deviation request, I did want to point out, was approved by city staff on October 9th, which was actually just Friday of last week. All right, so shifting gears here into the tentative map findings that need to be considered this evening. For the most part, the findings are listed in numerical order. There are, however, limited instances where I've taken them out of order in an attempt to group specific topics together. So starting off here with Finding T1, which is conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. As proposed, the amended tentative map increases the allowed number of single-family lots by 30. And that, as we've discussed, is by incorporating townhomes into the subdivision. And ultimately incorporating those townhomes into the subdivision advances Policy H1 and H2 by providing a townhome housing product within the city of Sparks Housing Market. And townhomes are commonly classified as missing middle housing that offers homeownership opportunities at lower price points when you compare those to traditional detached single-family housing. So diversity there in terms of product and price point. Policy CC8 encourages neighborhood diversity with varied lot sizes as well as a mix of architectural styles, materials, and colors. The proposed subdivision does include lot size variation, and then home designs will need to comply with the architectural standards in the handbook that are in place with standards that address varied building styles, color, and materials. Looking at Policy C4, sidewalks are proposed on both sides of the street per the handbook and in compliance with this policy. And city services to the site can be provided at acceptable service levels. And that is something that was previously also evaluated with the handbook, the original handbook approval, and then the initial tentative map approval for Phase 2. Here on this slide, Findings T2 and T7 each relate to streets. For conformance with the city's street master plan, project access is provided from Stone Brook Parkway, Opio Ranch Parkway, and then also Fenway. This is consistent with the handbook approval and the initial tentative map. Finding T7 focuses on impacts to public streets. With this particular application, we received an updated trip generation letter that estimates 489 single-family dwelling units will generate 4,478 average daily trips with 466 PM peak hour trips. These residential units were considered at the time of the initial handbook approval. And the Stone Brook Plan Development was designed to accommodate just shy of 2,000 single-family dwelling units, generating almost 16,000 average daily trips. And so ultimately, adequate capacity exists to accommodate the addition of 30 lots to the Phase 2 tentative map because the overall number of single-family units in the Stone Brook Handbook remains capped. And there are the single-family lots remaining approved but unbuilt. So staff is... So staff is not concerned that we don't have adequate capacity in the roadway network. It is worth noting that both RTC and Endot provided comments on the amendment request. RTC did not identify any concerns. Endot did, however, express concern that the 2017 traffic study that was provided with the original tentative map didn't address improvements at the intersection of Opio Ranch and Pyramid Way. And here it's important to know that those improvements were considered at the time of handbook approval, and those improvements continue to move forward consistent with those improvements that were identified. Moving on here with this slide to finding T3. Agencies that regulate environmental impacts did not choose to provide comments on this request. However, the developer does need to meet local county and state requirements. Finding T4 focuses on the availability of water to serve the site. Here, the domestic water requirement is estimated a little over 138 acre-feet per year, and municipal water service will be provided by Tamlan. Finding T5 takes a look at the availability of utilities to serve the site, including sewer and storm drain capacity. Here, the applicant is required to provide evidence that there is adequate sewer capacity to serve the project prior to the recordation of a final map, and the city has accounted for the sewer capacity in the studies conducted at the handbook approval stage and in the original tentative map. The stormwater and drainage plan for the development also must be approved prior to the recordation of any final map. Finding T6 takes a look at availability of schools, police, transportation, and parks. For schools, we did get an updated comment letter from the Washoe County School District. And with the additional 30 residential units, that will ultimately add 104 new students to Bohatch Elementary, 48 to Shaw Middle School, and 44 to Spanish Springs High School. What was noted is that Bohatch and Sky Ranch are projected to remain under capacity for at least five years. And while current enrollment at Spanish Springs High School is over capacity, enrollment relief at Spanish Springs High is anticipated with the opening of the new high school in fall of 2022. For police, the Sparks Police Department will provide services to the site. They didn't provide any concerns with the current proposal. And as previously discussed, the roadway network for Ston Brook was designed to accommodate a total of over 1,900 single-family lots, and that maximum number of single-family lots has not yet been achieved. For parks, as discussed earlier, this amended tentative map complies with the handbook that plans for a 20-acre community park site located within Phase Three of Ston Brook. Moving on here to finding T8, which addresses floodplains, slopes, and soil. The lots proposed with the amended tentative map, those don't fall within the 100-year floodplain, and the site is predominantly flat. We don't have any type of development standards that are triggering sites that contain significant slopes and any other types of approvals. And then we have final geotechnical reports that are required at the time of final map. In regards to outside agency responses per finding T9, here only the school district, RTC, and Endot provided comments, and I already went over those comments. And then finding 10 asks you to look at the availability of fire protection services. Here, the site is located outside the four-minute travel time standard for the Sparks Fire Department. The city does, however, have an agreement with the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District for automatic aid to serve the area. And in addition, as it relates to fire service, I did want to point out that Condition 20 has been modified. Only one temporary turnaround is needed at the western terminus of Ston Brook Parkway with this amended request. And in addition, there's flexibility that's been built into Condition 20 that allows for either a temporary turnaround or another alternative method. Finding T11 looks to other impacts that staff has identified in our analysis of the proposal. Here, we've identified landscaping area maintenance, architecture for the residences, fencing, and regional trails. Condition 12 addresses landscaping, requiring that common areas be maintained by a landscape maintenance association. I think I mentioned the architectural standards outlined in the handbook. Those are in place, and those will be reviewed as model house plans come forward prior to each final map. And then in terms of fencing, Condition 19 not only requires fencing plans at the time of final map, but also specifies how trap fencing for the model home complex must be addressed. That trap fencing, which is temporary in nature, it needs to accommodate emergency access, minimize intrusion of the posts into concrete, and then also be removed prior to the sale of model homes. Conditions 14 and 15 both address options for construction of planned regional trails either by payment of the regional trail impact fee or with construction by the developer through an impact-free credit agreement. With the first option, which is payment of the impact fee, final plans for construction of the regional trails are required. And then finally, finding T12 requires the public be notified of this item. And here, the posting of the agenda for this meeting as well as the city council meeting serves to provide that public noticing. And tonight's agenda was posted on October 7th. So to conclude here, staff is recommending the Planning Commission for a recommendation of approval to City Council, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have on this amended tentative map.
Thank you, Sienna. Do any other commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Carey.
Madam Chair, just wanted to follow up on kind of what Commissioner Pritzos was talking about the other day concerning density. Looking through the staff report, it looks like roughly Ston Brook has gone through about 2/3 of the maximum number of units that have been approved, whether they've been tentative-mapped or final-mapped. By my count, there's like something like 574 units left to be built. I was just kind of curious, is there enough land remaining within Ston Brook to build out those remaining units that are allowed?
It is my understanding that there is. In working through the analysis of this particular request, Phase One is almost to what was initially approved through the tentative maps, but is, you know, actually shy of just a few lots. And we don't have any information otherwise that there wouldn't be enough land area to accommodate the units that were identified or are identified in the handbook.
I guess as a follow-up, and I don't know if something like this exists or not, but is there a projection of how close the Ston Brook development will come out in reaching those 1,848 units that have been approved, and where it would be at upon build-out in terms of density?
I'd have to actually go back and do a little bit more research. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. You know, as I noted, there was, you know, just very, very slight differences in Phase One, so there might be, you know, a slight bit under what, you know, the absolute maximum allowed in Ston Brook. And, you know, I'm certainly happy to get back to you at a later time with those exact numbers.
Okay, that's fair enough. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sienna, I had just one question, just for clarification. On the townhomes, did you say that they were mainly going to be for senior living?
What the applicant has identified is that they will be targeted towards an active adult community. So, you know, we haven't necessarily heard that they will be targeted towards seniors, but certainly that is, you know, a population that could be considered an active adult. With the deviation request that was submitted, really the goal in terms of providing, you know, a different type of recreation facility was to kind of move away from that child-oriented play facility, just to have amenities that are a little bit more desirable for an adult population.
Certainly. Thank you. Any other questions? Ian?
I just wanted to just tag on a little bit to what Sienna had said to Commissioner Carey's question. We have, in the handbook, they have broken down the number of units per village or development as they go through this Ston Brook development, and none of those developments at this point are over capacity. None of them have asked for more units than are permitted in their or have been allotted to their individual village, with the one exception being the multifamily project over on the west side of Ston Brook, out by Pyramid Highway, if you may remember that project. They did a tentative map at a little bit lower density because they knew that they were going to share that density under the same ownership with another site. And that's actually gone through the process and both been approved. The tentative map's been approved there, and the administrative review for the multifamily's been approved, and the planning commission saw the elevations for those units. And so throughout the development, we know that we have not in any way consistently exceeded the member of units allotted to each village. So we know that if they continue to develop as they have been, they will be within their allotted units. In fact, they may be asking to transfer density to additional villages at the end because they potentially could have some additional units. We know that density is important, but the way that the handbooks were written at the time, they really allowed for a little bit lower density potentially in their villages and asked for a little bit more to make sure they could make all of their pieces pencil. So just to kind of give you a little more background information of where that's at.
Does that help, Commissioner Carey?
Madam Chair, yes, it does, and thanks for that information, Ian. I get what you're saying about that they're not over their maximum, and it just kind of appears to me that they're, you know, to date with all these tentative maps that we've reviewed as a commission in Ston Brook, it appears that they're under, and there's quite a few units remaining. I was just kind of curious, in your opinion, and kind of what you're seeing with processing the final maps and building permits with your team, I was just kind of curious what your feeling is on if we're going to end up, once we get through Phase Three of Ston Brook, if there's going to be a ton of units left over, we're going to have a really low density than what's called out in the comprehensive plan and in the handbook.
Sure. The general developments, as we go through and update the IFSA, which goes and looks at specifically not just what's entitled, but what the projects have been building out. All throughout the North Valleys, we have consistently had slightly lower densities. There's no reason we would expect that to change drastically in this case. However, as we have become more and more aware of how important that density is, although we are accounting for all of that through IFSA, we're accounting for whatever they come in at, we encourage those builders to come in closer and closer to those designed development thresholds. However, as I was saying, the handbooks don't typically set lower ends, even though the comp plan does push them that direction. The handbooks don't require minimum densities typically, and so, you know, we are working with them to try to do what we can to get the densities as high as we reasonably can throughout those developments.
And Commissioner Carey, I'm happy to get you some more detailed numbers, but as it relates to this particular request, I will point out that the tentative map densities for Villages E, F, and G are substantially in alignment with the comprehensive plan density ranges.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Sienna. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant rep on the call?
They are. I will allow them to speak right now.
Hi, it's Stacy. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Stacy Huggins with Wood Rogers representing the applicant. Just want to say, Sienna did a great job summarizing the project. I don't have anything to add. We have read the conditions and agree with them as proposed.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Pritzos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say I really appreciated that discussion that Commissioner Carey had with both Sienna and Ian. I thought that was very informative. I share some of Commissioner Carey's concerns about the density, though a lot of these tentative maps seem to be a little under density. But I really do appreciate this request to move towards some more townhouses. I think that is a good way to kind of add diversity to the housing market and also to help with that density problem. So I just want to say I will be supporting this request.
Thank you, Commissioner Pritzos. Any further discussion? Any questions? Don't all speak up at once. Commissioner Peterson.
I'll take a stab at the motion. I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council to amend the Ston Brook Phase Two tentative map according to finding adopting, excuse me, findings T1 through T12 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff's report and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 21.
Thank you. We have a motion.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Peterson and a second by Commissioner Pritzos. Any further discussion before we vote? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments for the record before we vote. Yeah, I overall remain concerned about density within Ston Brook and some of the other planned developments we have in the north part of the city and how, you know, those densities and the number of units coming below what's called out in the handbook and how that's going to impact fee service area one. You know, although I think that there's room, particularly within Village E and Village G within this tentative map, revised tentative map request, I think there's room for more density in those villages, but I think this is going to help increase the densities in this area and get it closer to what's envisioned in the comprehensive plan and within the handbook. I concur with staff's recommendations and agree that the proposed change is consistent with what's called out. I think City did a good job explaining that. I'll just note, I heard a presentation today at the State Economic Forum from Edon, and they were talking about the need within the region to help increase density in the area and develop additional units and smaller lots and townhomes and multifamily development. I think that's something that we should keep in mind as a commission as we move forward with our comprehensive plan update and looking at future tentative maps in order to kind of make sure that we're getting to those higher densities that are envisioned in the comprehensive plan and in these handbooks and create smaller lots and different housing choices. So I will be supporting the motion, but just wanted to get those comments out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco is absent. Commissioner Carey.
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rawson.
Thank you. Motion passes. Let's move on to item eight, which is selection of a commissioner to serve on the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission to fill the remainder of a term vacated by Commissioner Vanderwell effective immediately and ending on June 30, 2021 from the following pool of applicants in alphabetical order, Scott Carey, Frank Peterson, Evan Pritzos, and Mike Rawson. Any discussion? Commissioner Pritzos.
I would like to, if I can, make a motion to appoint Commissioner Carey to serve I would like to, if I can, make a motion to appoint Commissioner Carey to serve on the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission to fill the remainder of a term effective immediately and ending on June 30th of 2021.
Thank you, Commissioner Pritzos. We have a motion. Commissioner Rawson, you'll need to unmute.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Pritzos and a second by Commissioner Rawson. Any discussion? Can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Aye.
Commissioner Blaco is absent. Commissioner Carey.
I'll vote for myself.
Commissioner Peterson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rawson.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Congratulations, Commissioner Carey. We'll be seeing you regularly on the Truckee Meadows Regional. Let's move on to general public comment and limited to items that are not on the agenda. Merrily, can you once again provide the call in information slide?
Thank you, Casey. Chair Reed, do you want me to read the entire spiel again, or do you just want the slide displayed?
Just have the slide displayed. Thank you. Do we have any callers for public comment?
We do not have any requests to speak at this time.
Thank you, Casey. With that, I will go ahead and close public comment and move on to item 10, which is announcements from staff and commissioners. We'll start with the staff. Any announcements?
Chair Reed, this is Armando Ornelas, Assistant Community Services Director. Staff does not have any announcements. Thank you.
Any of the commissioners have announcements? Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, commissioners, for voting for me for Regional Planning Commission. I appreciate it. I certainly have some big shoes to fill with now Councilman Vanderwell. She did a great work on regional planning. I look forward to representing the city on that. I was wondering, and I'm not sure if this is an announcement, but I was wondering if perhaps as a commission, we could bring back the future agenda items on our agendas. I think in recent months, we've kind of had commissioners and myself included bring up things for future agenda items during this part of the agenda. I think it would be good to maybe bring that item back, and it would be, you know, be appropriate for us to do that in a separate agenda item.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Is that something that we can do, or do we do that elsewhere?
Madam Chair, the announcements from staff and commissioners is the appropriate place to make those kinds of requests. There's been direction from the city manager's office down through the clerk's office to have all the meetings for city boards and commissions be as uniform as possible, and this is one of the ways that they have become more uniform.
Thank you. So Commissioner Carey, to answer your question, if you have items for future agenda items you'd like to bring to staff, this would be the time to do so.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Comments? All right. With that, I move that we adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Thanks.